I think you called the Board of Trustees, regular meeting Monday, March 2nd, 2015, at 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Option of agenda.
There's no changes, I'll make a motion to add an agenda, sir.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. The only thing we had was the, I think everybody's seen the material on the bench. Do you want to just put this as a discussion point, under my report, or that'll be fine? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed? Motion passes. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments? Approval minutes? Two nineteen, two thousand fifteen.
No changes, I'll make a motion to approve minutes as per. Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed? Motion passes. Sheriff's report. I don't believe I have the updated copy yet from the sheriff. And actually, I, instead of putting this on every month again, I think we're gonna have to go to like a quarterly or something like that, because the reports just don't come in a timely manner for us to do this every month with this. So, I'm gonna recommend that again. Fire Department report, Chief.
Please proceed and file.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Chief? EMS report, Mr. White?
Not present. He stated he wasn't gonna be here.
He has to receive.
Thank you. DPW report.
Uh, receiving and filing, please.
Thank you. Code Enforcement report.
The Michigan Department of Consumer and Industrial Services, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, forms have been received.
Thank you. Assessing Department report. Any questions? Moving on. Engineers report, Mr. Safe.
If no questions, receiving and filing, please.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Safe? Library report. Library has expanded its offerings to include a database of online magazines. The Neo offers library patrons an opportunity to review current magazines from our website. Log on to www.lennoxlibrary.org and scroll to the bottom of the screen. Click on the Zeneo icon to check out the selection of available magazines. Uh, they have a Lego club that's open to boys and girls. Groups work on Lego projects in teams. Once the project is constructed, the finished products are raffled off to a member of each team. Uh, Saturday, March 7th, from 1:30 to 2:30, uh, to win a Lego project. Beginning March 2nd through March 7th, we will be celebrating the birthday of Dr. Seuss. Visit us for an opportunity to hear Dr. Seuss' story and win a copy of one of his books. Tuesday, March 17th, we will offer an adult craft. The program will begin at 5:30. Friday, March 20th, we will be making chocolate. Saturday, March 28th, from 1:30 to 3:00 PM, we'll have our annual Easter party. The Easter Bunny will be hopping along Main Street. Thank you. Senior Center report. I don't have that. And Supervisor report. Which I discussed earlier, I've received a request from the Village of New Haven regarding their fountain project. Uh, they would like us to participate in that project by, um, purchase of one or two benches with placards. I did receive an email from Clerk Keith regarding an existing bench we have. Um, and I actually spoke to the DPW superintendent a little bit, so if you'd like to elaborate on that, Clerk Keith.
Um, we do have some benches, or we had some benches behind the DPW. There's just one. There was originally like eight back there.
Right, between the park here.
Excuse me.
That's a big picture.
Hold it, please. Thank you. That way everybody can hear, just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Uh, to be honest with you, the exact number of what we had, I don't recall exactly how many we picked up, but over the years, um, somebody wants a bench here, somebody wants a bench there. Um, after I received your email, when I was at the shop, I looked, there's one bench left, there are three picnic tables, but they need parts.
Um, and the reason, back when we had the elections down there, and that's what, the only reason, you know, was like, wow, there was, I remember there was a whole bunch of benches back there. My only concern with this, I don't have a problem with it. I actually, um, bought perks for this project, but it's a donation. And so, Mr. Johnson?
Coming.
Absolutely. Attorney Johnson?
Well, um, just haven't had an opportunity to look into this, but so if I could just maybe ask a couple of questions. This would be, uh, either the donation, and perhaps donation is the wrong word, but uh, there would be a park bench installed in a park.
Correct.
Somewhere?
Correct.
In the village. In the village. Uh, and it would be a park that's accessible to and usable by township residents?
Correct.
And it may be that we use one of an excess park or bench from the township in what our normal plaque kind of looks like?
What they, what the, the initial request was for a new purchase of one or two benches with a purchase of a plaque for each one. Um, and then we were made aware that we do have a bench over at the DPW, an available bench.
Well, I think if the township has excess benches that it may be getting rid of anyway, and the fact that this will be a park that is open to township residents in the village, the village obviously is part of the township in a way, in terms of paying taxes and elections and so forth. Uh, for that reason, I think, uh, this would fall into the category of public expenditure, uh, and not a donation, because you are providing a park bench, although it may be treated the same as donations from private donors. Uh, it is a public park bench that's going into a public park to be used by the public, including the township residents. So, for all those reasons, I think this expenditure would be acceptable. Uh, and I think the question's asked, because I've read your opinions previously, or mentioned that you, the township can't donate tax monies to private charities, um, and that would be inappropriate. But if this is going to the village, like I said, for all those reasons, I think this is different from that sort of expenditure or use of township batteries.
Now, is that the same one, this? Because this, it says make the check payable to the New Haven Fountain Park project, which is not the village. I'm just asking, because like I said, I don't have a problem with this.
Right, well.
I just wanna make sure we do it correctly.
I think the way to do it correctly is to use the township's own park bench and donate that to the park that sounds like the, uh.
I can contact Mr. Jones and see if that's acceptable. See if this is willing to, I know it's not the kind he wants, but it's a bench, and hopefully that'll be acceptable to them, to use in their park there.
Right.
And, and the village probably should run it by them too, that this is their project, because this is their park.
And that's not to say that a donation to this organization, and again, improperly using the word donation, it wouldn't be a donation if, again, the money is going toward a public purpose. If that is the case, that some township funds, uh, are written out by way of a check to some private organization, um, again, if those funds, if the private organization is gonna provide some sort of public services to township residents that are gonna be available for use by township residents, that may be acceptable as well, as long as there is some sort of documentation in the form of a letter agreement or something, a short letter agreement that is promising that the funds will be used for these public purposes. And I can assist if you go the money route on this. But if you go the park bench route, I don't think that's as critical.
So, if you wanna bring this back after you talk to Chuck?
Yes, Mr. Jones, you might want to be present here also too, to speak on this subject. I told him I didn't. What's on the agenda? What, who might be able to bring it into this meeting?
I myself didn't have a problem with this, I just wanted to make sure that it was done correctly.
Cam, is there any repairs or any money that needs to be spent on that bench to be put into use? Not the bench, no, just the picnic tables. Alright. I will give Mr. Jones a call and ask him if that would be acceptable, if that's the board's pleasure.
And then, um, bring it back to the board next month as an actual agenda item?
Sounds good to me. Is that the board's pleasure? Okay.
Do we have to find out about, like, any flag on it?
I think my flag right now actually says Pine Tree. I think that's where those, those came from. You know, and if he was acceptable to that?
I'd rather see it being used than it being available and not used.
Oh, absolutely. And if he, if he's acceptable with that one, the one that's right by the back door could be a second one? Because he's asking for a couple.
He said one or two, that's what he said. He said if we'd like to purchase one or two, that's exactly how he put it. Okay, thank you. Treasurers report.
Make a motion to accept the Treasurers' report?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed? Motion passes. Orders and bills?
I'm Jody, the Aunt Karen, the half bill. Now, that will cover until when? March 1st to April 1st, is that how they do it? And then that blue cross one was to cover the last, the last two weeks of February.
Yeah.
I believe it is over, is it March 1st?
Yep. Half one from, started March 1st.
Right. Yeah, I got my card in the mail.
Did you?
Yeah. See, it says in the letter that they'll send out a booklet or, you know, an explanation of benefits shortly, so. Thank you. There's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the orders of bills at a cost of
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? And just so everybody's not pulling away, there's a large intercept of payment in that bill that's filed. That's almost what it is.
Almost fifteen.
Yeah, that's almost 1.5 along.
Eighteen four.
Yeah, 1.4 million 886,791 along. Jeff, Nick, Clerk Will call, please.
Churchie?
Aye.
Adenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees report, Trustee Churchie, please.
Um, nothing at this time, um, other than at the planning commission level, um, there's a company that, the month before we approved, um, some wetlands mitigate, you know, mitigation land, he came back this following month with another plan, and we put that on hold because we had a lot of questions yet, because it's getting larger and larger and larger, and there's concerns yet, so we have that tabled. So, other than that, pretty quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's report, Clerk Keith.
We have a, um, election coming up on May 5th, 2015. This is the state road, uh, question proposal that everyone's been hearing about, and also there's going to be a Armada School proposal on there. And that's it for now.
Thank you.
Make a motion to receive and file, reports?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed? Motion carries. There's no unfinished business. Number 20, new business aid. Rehire a fire department employee. Chief Wu Shae, please.
I sent, uh, the board a letter as well as a copy of firefighter Yakes' application, actually reapplication. Scott worked for us from March of 2006 through December 2009. At that time, he actually moved up north for employment. He's back in our area, he's been actually back down here for approximately a year, a little over a year, and, uh, he had to wait till he finished up a lease, he had an apartment in Chesterfield before he could, uh, work his way back into the township. So, he's currently, uh, right on the border, um, in the apartments, right across from Ridgefield High School on 32 Mile Road. Scott came to us and is asked to be rehired, and so, very simple terms, I'm asking to rehire Scott Yakes.
Thank you, Chief.
Scott, is Scott available during the day?
Yes, right now, his, his work schedule, correction, his work schedule, he works Sunday and Thursdays, 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM, and Fri- Saturday and Tuesday, 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM. So, he works Thursday, Saturday, Sunday and Tuesday. Okay, so, and he works PM to AM, so then he's around all during the day, and then the other three days, he's on a four, I'm sorry, he has a 48-hour work schedule there, so he would 12-hour shifts. So, he's around for three days, plus every day during the day. If he's trying to sleep, he'll still get woke up like we do at night, so.
That's good, man, we need, we need people during the day.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Chief Wu Shae to rehire firefighter Scott Yakes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed? Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
TJ Enterprises LLC, annual renewal for mining permit. Viper's Act.
Evening, Board. I guess, any questions? I believe the, uh.
Sorry.
On your knees.
We dropped off the, uh, reports from last year's usage, and we should have that filed.
You can pull that right out if you need.
That's alright.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Viper's Act?
What's the timetable for finishing this project up now?
Um, last year we had a pretty good year, the last few years have been increasing. Um, and from our other businesses, it looks like workload's continuing, so if that all goes well, um, I don't know, I would say four to five years would be a fairly safe number. Um, we're gonna get to the point now where, before we could sell more material, because we have more, um, types of material to sell, now we're down in the water and, and select areas finishing up. So, our selection's gonna be a little bit more minimal, so some of them might reduce some of the, uh, sales, but other than that, everything else should look pretty good.
They were present at the planning commission, um, we asked general questions and asked if there were any, any problems or concerns, um, we asked how the drainage system was working that was put in, everything was fine, monitoring wells are coming in fine, um, no outstanding complaints.
No, no other reporting.
So, and we did talk about the timetable too, and how the, the change in the sand, you know, because of, because we always knew that the north end, um, the sand there was like powder almost, it was like baby powder, so that's why we got a lot of blowing, but the outside's, I think it's covered now with.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you don't get as much blowing unless you get a torrential massive, you know, tornado winds or something. I haven't heard anything or seen anything, so we approve their special annus for the annual renewal.
Any other questions?
Just a, did you have? Yeah, just a comment, uh, uh, in the past few years, uh, the Vipers Act has asked to renew their permit and waive a certain requirement for the original agreement, which is, um, the field verification of volumes removed, that, uh, historically it was done by their engineer, they go out and they do a survey, and they provide the numbers, and then we review it to verify the volumes removed. In the past few years, this board had waived that requirement. If, if you're asking for that again tonight, just make sure that it's in the motion.
Because that can be verified at any time, correct?
We're relying on the, um, the trucking numbers, the, the volumes used through the trucks.
Right, it's basically solely off of invoice material.
So, there's no field verification site from their internal records, and the township has accepted that prior. At the end, it will be subject to verification, field verification, but they only interim every year, we have to go through this, just to make sure, you know, we're not violating the original agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion that we approve the annual renewal for the mining permit for TJ Enterprises LLC.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions? Attorney Johnson?
Will that motion include waiver of the, of, uh?
You want it made specific?
That would.
You want it made specific?
Field verification. Field verification. Yes, it should be made specific.
I amend that motion to include the waiver of the requirement for?
Field verification.
Field verification.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Township building heating and cooling system. Uh, this more is for intended, I don't know, for discussion purposes after last week. Mr. Safe and Mr. Trump, can I be able to vote him, please, because I know I have a couple of questions to quick. And this came in response, I spoke to, thank you very much, is it coming on? I spoke to Treasurer Adenbacher during the weekend, uh, once again, we had some conditions for the employees in here. It was hovering around 50 degrees, uh, for a few days again, where we had to put people into certain offices for, for heating purposes, and the heating and cooling in this building is just not functional. And we need to determine what is gonna be the best way to revise the heating system first and foremost, um, to get a good handle on this. We've had issues ever since, I know that I've got to here, take an office, back in '08, that this building is not properly cooled or heated itself. And not to the fault of these gentlemen, they've been trying to help the situation, but I think we need to spend some money on this and figure this problem out once and for all. We can't let this keep going on. As everybody knows, we even had a pipe burst in, inside of our building, 10 foot inside the building, that was insulated. Building is just not heated correctly. There's different zones in this building that, um, Karen, down by your office, you are running heaters constantly. I had in my office 50 degrees up front, clerk's office, I believe the same way. Everybody's using supplemental heaters, it is not cost-effective, or I just, I don't like the safety issue of it either.
We just got in today's mail, a new electric bill for here for last month, and it went up over $1,000.
It's ridiculous, for a, for a geothermal building that's supposed to be energy efficient, it's, it's ridiculous. Totally ridiculous. And I know, after reviewing the initial plans, there was supplemental heating and cooling units that were removed from the plan, but I think possibly after speaking with the DPW superintendent, we need to revisit with the architect, um, and the contractor, if we could, and get to the bottom of this, oh, or Mr. Safe's recommendation, to try and figure this out, because it just, it cannot keep going on like this.
This was actually talked about when we, uh, worked on the budget. It was put into the budget to get the heating corrected. I guess my question is, is this something that we need to do, like an RFP, doing, um, a publication, asking for bids for people that actually have the expertise in geothermal?
My recommendation would be to meet not only with the architect that designed this building, but even try to meet with the engineer that designed this heating and cooling system. Throw out what our issues are, what our problems. You know, the stuff that was deleted and is not here, that was supposed to be, I mean, that's just a given. But the other issues, because even if, I believe if we put that equipment back in place, it's still not gonna be enough.
I would agree with you on that.
The other issue that we're dealing with is, we have limited options as far as what kind of energy we're gonna use to create supplemental heat. Right now, we're, we're stuck with just electric, because there is no natural gas in the area. You know, or you're looking at propane, which.
Based on other runs of similar distances, it could cost a million dollars to bring in a natural gas line to this building, which is not.
My sense of, you know, let's, you know, to start this process, I believe we should bring in these people that this is their specialty, to create an RFP to correct this problem.
I mean, let, let, correct me if I'm wrong, our options are limited to geothermal, LP, and electric?
Yes.
And, I mean, if, if solar, if so, so be it, or any of that. I don't know if there's any additional grants filled for that, but I, I don't think we can wait for something like that.
You know, the way the technology changes, that may be something that's discussed. You know, that's why I believe we should bring these professionals, that this is their field, this is their specialty.
I agree with that. I can tell you, um, at 5 o'clock, when everybody leaves, the heat in here immediately goes with, um, Saturdays, especially in the wintertime, I sit with one hand underneath my robe to keep it warm and while I'm trying to work. It's, it's been at 50 degrees in here from 5 o'clock on.
Sure.
And on the weekend, it just keeps getting colder, and I, I'm pretty sure the sheriffs will tell you the same thing.
Sure, and it, and it's part of the, the way the system is designed for it, to go to unoccupied mode. You know, and due to certain drafts and, and the way the building's layout, it does cool down very quickly, especially on the days when we're, we're dealing with. with way below zero temperatures, and then you throw the windshields on top of it with some of the high winds we've had, it just exaggerates the issue even more. You know, yeah, I mean, uh, was it last week, I believe it was, we had the real strong sub-zero weather, and, uh, you could almost feel the drafts. I mean, you could feel the drafts up, up in front. It was like a wind tunnel. There was so much air coming through, and, uh, that's just not efficient.
Even, even the front entrance, we have no way of trapping the heat, uh, from the front doors. Uh, I don't know if anybody, that's where that pipe burst off of that wall, from the north wind hitting it, and this up here, it's, that heater's running constant, and it's, it's doing absolutely nothing. Absolutely nothing. There's no way to capture that vestibule area up front there. So, I think there's some things, some design flaws and things that I'd like to, um, have the superintendent be able to contact these gentlemen for a meeting with Mr. Safe present, um, and see if we can get to the bottom of this, with myself and another board member. It, it has to be addressed. And I, I don't know, Attorney Joppick, would there, uh, any recourse with a patent or latent defect?
Well, that, that, I was thinking along those lines myself, but, uh, you know, that would take a review of any warranties and contracts that were entered into at the time of constructing the building, evaluating those, to see if there is, um, you know, any sort of potential liability there, or any warranties. I presume the warranties are probably all as well as salt, right? But you never know until you look, and that could just be a, a look on, on, you know, the staff's part, and if you think there might be something there, so that maybe I can take a look at that, or the contracts. I can take a scan over them. Uh, I assume you had a project manager.
But really, there was no defects that they knew, that, that would be above the warrant, that would be a separate issue from the warranty, correct? That we might have some recourse?
You would have to have something installed incorrectly. If everything is installed according to the plans, then you rely on your warranties, unless the design was defective in some way.
That's what I'm getting at.
And, and that's, that's a possibility too, that it goes to the engineer that you might be calling in to meet with. Uh, that could be part of the discussion set to meeting with that person.
And that's, maybe we're having, Sremit, Sremit present, if he smells something fishy, then we might be able to look into it a little deeper or something.
We've opened in here in May of two thousand, really, I don't think there's any, any warranties out there or anything.
Most likely that, if there's some equipment that's malfunctioning in some way, there could be tenured warranties on heating equipment potentially. I've seen that, uh, that's equipment called, and it's probably limited to parts, but you don't know until you look at your materials and find the source of the problem, if it is.
And that first winter, and we've been battling this ever since, if everybody recalls, the first electric bill, uh, back at that time, it was astronomical, I believe.
Yeah, and that was due to some issues with the, the equipment not running properly or rattles properly.
Correct. Goes back to exactly what we're saying. It's always been an issue, always. Yeah, I think that, that bill was thirteen thousand something for electric.
That's what I recall.
And an energy efficient geothermal building. It's astronomical. It's ridiculous. But I think we're all in agreement, we definitely gotta do something here.
Okay, so I was just, um, conferring with Attorney Joppick. Um, I make a motion to direct the supervisor's office to...
Well, perhaps these gentlemen can indicate clearly exactly.
I could, to direct the superintendent and the engineer to contact?
Well, but it needs to come through your office, so I direct the supervisor's office to follow through with the architect and the engineers about the heating system in this building and see what our, um, avenues are for correction of it.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. I just want to clarify, it'll be with the use of these two gentlemen also. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
That's how I understood it, but I think, like she said, it has to come through your office to them and...
That's exactly the way I wanted it. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll do our best to get to the bottom of it as quick as possible. Thank you, gentlemen. I think, you know, just, just to read her, we've, we've tried everything possible and given it as much time as we could to try and see if the bugs have worked out of the system. It just isn't happening. Lennox Township Fee Schedule Revision.
Last time this was looked at was in 2004, and so it's time to revamp it. Um, these are the fees that we are being charged, and so we need to recoup that from those that use it.
What do you, what type of fee schedule are you referring to?
I'm sorry?
What are you referring to?
This fee schedule is, um, the applica- like, this is some of the stuff on your address application, a cemetery booklet, um, rezoning fees, sign application fees, stuff in red is what's being changed, uh, commercial. So, it's the stuff that comes in front of the Planning Commission.
Nothing fire. I don't see anything fire related in it.
That's why I'd like to add in.
Okay, that's why I thought you were gonna add.
Last time my, the Fire Department fee schedule was raised was in 2011, so, um, I'd like, like you to, if you decide to increase the fees, what I did is, is fairly straightforward, I nearly all of it, a five percent increase. Uh, some of it is less, some is more, and you'll see there's one there, no change at the very bottom, and these are all very small. But it's been, uh, four years since we've addressed the fee schedule at the Fire Department level also, so I'd like you to...
So, basically, a one point two-five percent increase over the course of the five, over the four years to determine a full five percent?
Basically.
And typically, CPI is two to three percent.
Yeah. These are really small increases you can look at, but it's, keep it in, our costs have gone up, that's why you're probably wrong, you know that, so.
Did Building Department see this, Mr. Higginson?
That's my knowledge.
Here, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have some. A lot of the Building Department fees are set, set by the state as far as what they can charge for certain things. Not all, some, some of that.
That's what I was wondering, if Bob had seen it, if this...
We can either address that separately or hold on this.
Address these two that are in front of us, and if the Building Department sees fit, they should, they should, um, submit something.
I have no problem with that. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we revise the Lennox Township fee schedule as presented, including the Lennox Township Fire Department commercial fee schedule as presented.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? If you'd like. Good evening.
Good evening, Roberta Schmidt, 2506529 model. Um, I was here at that Planning Commission meeting, and it was tabled, and he was really mad. Um, he was really, really mad. Um, my concern is that he's gonna somehow take this out on me and our family. Um, I did get a clue as to what he was up to. Um, he wants to put a berm around our property, and he spoke of, um, putting these pools in that would, once this pool filled up, it would overfill into this other pool, it overfill. Except my house is still at the very bottom of the, the elevations on the map still. My, my driveway is below grade of the road, and if he puts a berm around my property, that makes my property a pool. And I'm not interested in being part of a wetland. I didn't build a house to make it be a wetland. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen next, so I'm kind of in, in limbo here with everything, but it was tabled, and, um, I don't know where to go from here. I'm just kinda waiting like everybody else, I guess. So, I appreciate everyone helping us out with this too. I don't know what's gonna happen, like I said. Um, I have a question about the heating and cooling thing, though. Would the plans approve for heating and cooling when the building was built? Don't you have to have that approved? I mean, we built our house too, and we had to have, like you said, it is a geothermal building. Um, it seems like a no-brainer here that why that wasn't, and I know, I pay the bills, I'm a, I'm an accountant at my church, and I pay the bills too, and I see how much electricity is, and, um, it just, and then you have to pull permits for all this stuff. So, why was the permit approved and the, everything for this? I mean, it's probably different because it's a commercial building, but I don't understand why it was allowed to get as far as it has. I mean, it's already been, you said 2008, and it's 2015, that's seven years. I mean, haven't you guys been freezing for seven years? No? No?
Not, not to the extent.
Well, it's been cold the past few years. I know that our house is sixty-two degrees because we can't afford to pay propane either, so we're running on propane and electricity, and it's expensive, so I understand, but, um, that's the only comment I had about that is why was it even allowed to get as far as it has? But, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No other public comment?
Make a motion, we adjourn at eight ten? Support.
Motion. Motion by...
I have to really look at the clock.
Motion by Treasurer Ottenbacher, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.